Okay, it's 9:02. Let's call our meeting to order. Roll call please.
Bobbitt.
Here.
Ron.
Here.
Hess.
Here.
We do have a quorum. Please bow your head in prayer. Dear and the Father, as we gather here today, dear Lord, we bend our heads and our knees down to you to give you all the praise and the glory, dear Lord, for all the wonderful things that you give to us each and every day, and that we might be thankful to you because it's through you that we are here to do your work. I ask that you be with us as we do the work set before us as our county. Help us to listen to you, to still our hearts and open them, dear Lord, and that you will give us the guidance and the direction that we need to make our county strong and carry it out in faith, dear Lord. I ask that you be with our president, our senators, congressmen, and all of those in leadership positions, dear Lord, as they too are doing the work here for our great nation because we are one nation under God because of you, dear Lord. I ask again that you be with us. I ask for your blessings, that we dedicate our work to you. I ask that you be with all those servicemen and women that are over across the seas and here on the soil, dear Lord, as we continue to have issues. Dear Lord, again, give us some guidance and directions so that we can do the right thing, dear Lord. I ask this all in the precious name. Amen.
Amen.
Max, would you lead us in the pledge to our flag, please?
Yes, I will. Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Acknowledge that the agenda was properly posted in accordance with the meeting act.
Okay, thank you. Consider an act on the minutes for September 4th, 2018, and September 6th, 2018, both regular minutes.
I should move.
Second.
Hess moves. Ron seconds to approve the regular minutes from September 4th and September 6th, 2018, as presented. All in favor?
Bobbitt.
Aye.
Ron.
Aye.
All ayes. Motion carried unanimously. Comments from the public on the below agenda items?
None.
No comments? CED report of conference and bridge inspections for all districts.
I'll give Max and Pat their send that you had 123 total. You had 45 of that 123. And we had two ratings that changed due to the specialty vehicle rating. And they'll be out this week to get all those posted. I think there was about 15 in the county.
Okay. Okay.
And routine repairs, just rip wrap and all that stuff, nothing too terrible there. No closure this time.
Thank you.
Yay.
Are the reduced coatings for the ratings, were those on any certain type of a bridge?
One was a timber and one was an IP. So, yeah, most of Max's were rail cars.
Yeah, they seem to be after my rail cars.
Yeah, and we're gonna run into that more of them. If they come around, they're gonna be there. I wouldn't be surprised if some of the rail cars didn't close or we had to put piers or something in them to shorten the spans or something.
Well, our rail cars, I think, they're about 40 feet.
Well, Max has some 80 and 90s.
Oh, you do?
Yeah, I have some 89 footers.
Oh, okay. I don't think any of my rail cars are that long.
Pat had a few long ones. Ran all sorts.
So, I had 45 and what Max have?
There was 123 total.
123 total, yep.
I'm always the big winner. I have more bridges than you guys.
That's the way you can pay the bills.
Ah, yeah, alright.
Max had 41, I think Pat had 37.
Yeah, the way it should be.
Okay. Alright, do we have a motion to approve?
I still move to approve.
Second.
Ron moved. Hess seconded to approve the CED report of conference and bridge inspections for D1, D2, and D3. All in favor?
Bobbitt.
Aye.
Ron.
Aye.
Aye.
All ayes. Motion carried unanimously. And that will be paid by federal, yeah.
We don't?
No.
Pass through to Ron.
Okay, gotcha. I like that answer.
And Donnie, I've got a, the Federal Register of USDOT released their $225 million bridge grant program. It'll be due the 4th. I met with Mike Patterson and we need to get together and have a plan because I don't think, I think he's gonna squeeze this out.
They, I got an email the other day. They said that they weren't gonna put any of the November bridges on there because they're already, so there was, said they'd be sending out something in a few days to tell them what other bridges to add to it.
Okay, this is a special fund?
Yes, this is what they said.
Okay, so, I might, I'll give you a call and see if we can maybe sit down and go over everybody's SERB projects and look at them or something and see what we can pick up. They want corridors and that's what Mike Patterson told me he said.
Oh, I thought they just, the deal they sent over there was for bridges.
No, this is a, this is a deal, this is extra money. It does not come out of our federal transportation. This comes out of the general revenue and it's aimed at, and there's only 26 states that qualify for it. Oklahoma is one of them. I've been working on this with NACO since last December and they released the deal and I've been talking to Shannon Sheffert and Mike Patterson and Oklahoma can submit three proposals and only three. And when I first talked to Mike Patterson, we talked about using SERB bridges to get them off our SERB and using that money for matching. And he was good with that and now he's not. He wants to use it all for state. He says we can do corridors better on state and I disagree.
Yeah.
So, we need to get together.
Probably wanting one that's ready or not?
They're wanting something that's close because we have till 2026 to spend the funds. And, but they're wanting it, they're gonna look at shovel-ready projects first, but Oklahoma, and that's gonna be up to Mike Patterson to choose those projects. We're not wanting one bridges, we're wanting several bridges. They want them to be bundled bridges and only for bridges.
I would want that only for bridges?
Only for bridges. They have to be bundled, only for bridges, but they're looking at corridors. So, I don't know. We need to look at some corridors that we have and look. So, anyway, I'll get with you and talk about that. I know it.
Bridges and corridors, yeah.
I know it is, but we can figure out something. There's no reason to let ODAC. I know, but we can't use roads. This is just for bridges. I'll get with you later this week because we've got to, I thought we'd look at maybe all the SERB ones. There only gonna be three and the state wants all three of them. But it was specifically, and that was when I was at the White House, that was my question specifically to.
You asked, I was pretty bit pinched that.
Yeah, about that, it needs to come back. And the intent was for it to come back to counties, but they wanted it to go through your dots. And I told them, if you go through your dots, dots will take the money. And what is happening? Dots are taking our money.
That deal they sent out Friday though was for, it was for bridges, but they said they would let us know something in a few days what we need to do, so.
Okay.
So, it may be the same.
Might be, because I talked to him Thursday. I was down there with him Thursday. Had an meeting.
So, we have that email filed.
Okay, alrighty. That's all. I'm out.
Yeah, I could've hit it, but I'm sorry about that.
Yeah, it's alright.
Okay, transfer of appropriations. We know we have one.
Yep. And this, I mean, do you all have, okay, for their payroll, but that, on the back it has.
Alright, thank you.
So, you have it issued or you'd rather you just do it every month? I don't know what we normally do, but.
Oh, um.
I guess it's.
No, we can do it. We can do it like that. Yes, okay, we can do it. So, we have.
Careful how you say extra.
Alex, you can stay right here. We're gonna prove these and we'll give you these back right here.
Yeah.
So, we have two transfers here. The first transfer is for $70,000 from the Palm Creek Ambulance M&amp;O to their, to their Palm Creek wages to cover their salaries.
See you, Donnie.
So, we have that one.
Okay.
And the second one is from D1. We're moving $3,000 from M&amp;O to travel.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
If I may, Lacy was going, she just tried to get a hold of Lacy to come sign because we can't pay, we, we'll have to wait on that cross of construction until we do a transfer.
Right, yeah. So, we might have to come, we might be able to come to it, but right now, we're gonna do these two.
Sure, okay.
So, all in, Hess moved. Ron seconded to approve the two transfer appropriations. All in favor?
Bobbitt.
Aye.
Ron.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All ayes. Motion carried unanimously. Oh, I don't, we don't have to sign up there anymore. We used to, but that's your own account. We don't have to do that anymore.
Now, this is both marked.
Yeah, you need to sign the bottom of it too.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
I'm sorry. But we used to when we all was under one umbrella, we all three had to sign, but we're not anymore, so we've all got independent, you know, 4,000, 4,100, 4,200, or 4,300, so we don't have to all three sign on that.
Okay. There it is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You need to text Bessie now on that.
Um, yeah.
She knows.
She knows.
Yeah.
Uh, review of purchase orders and travel claims.
I move to review.
Second.
Ron moves. Hess seconds to review payment of purchase orders and travel claims. All in favor?
Bobbitt.
Aye.
Ron.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All ayes. Motion carried unanimously.
Okay.
Yeah, we can't, if there, if there's a PO in here for that, we can't.
Yeah.
So, if you'll.
If I find it, I'll dig it out.
If you will, just pull it out, please. I think she was waiving maybe, but she might've put it in. I don't know for sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't know. I don't think it's in there, but.
That hazel nut coffee creamer is good.
You like it.
I like that.
Now, you know what's getting asked for Christmas. I was hoping this morning about they should like pumpkin cheesecake. I said, I have a gift for you for $50 just cheesecake battery.
If we pay for copies by the page, why do we pay for the tone? Do you see that one on that? Yeah, that's why they didn't get a PO because they thought it was part of their contract on the.
Oh, they have to, I think, pay for their color tone though, which to me, that's.
Well, if you're paying for color, you're paying, we're paying more for color. Why is that separate from our contract?
I don't know. And I asked, we did ask them about that and I told her, I said, you need to renegotiate that contract.
Yeah, she sure does.
Because I said, that's not the way we have our other contracts because the tone, that's what we were talking about that too. So, I did visit with her about that and I said, you need to renegotiate that contract.
And you did look at the contract. It does, that's why you say that. Well, there's no reason to pay them by the page if you're not paying.
Right, right.
What's the use of that? What's the use of it?
Which they are paying less per page, but still, I think, that we're better off doing it the, where they, yeah.
Is that the assessor's contract you were looking at earlier, Cindy?
No, it was OSU's.
OSU, okay. I just think the assessor had a deal there, so.
Oh.
I didn't look at it yet.
Okay, I haven't got it yet.
Yeah, it'll be under that stack.
You're in the next folder.
Yeah. Oh, here's one more. Thank you.
Don't sign that.
Hey, hey, hey.
I can sign the top of it now.
Oh, okay. I can do that. I don't punch a hole in the paper.
Well, it wasn't in the sales tax form.
I was gonna say, I don't think it's in there.
Yeah.
I didn't tell her till this morning. And I said, well, we'd have to have that transfer go through anyway.
Yeah.
Cindy, on that internet, that SSL certification, is that the one-time deal?
That was that deal. It was the.
Right, yeah. It's just a one-time deal though, right?
Yes, yes. Yes, it is.
Oh, sorry, man.
Sorry.
Girl, let you have these.
Okay. Gonna let me slide the whole thing over.
You can have the whole sheet, mate.
OSU.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, here's your last email.
Okay. Let's just write it up, put it under there. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Cindy, you need to go with the health department and explain what blankets are. They're using these, light blankets, and that, you can't do it that way. Yeah. Yeah, that is, I mean, I know that they're doing that, but, and that's fine, but they just need to call it a blanket.
Yeah.
That's a great way to do it, but it has to be a blanket. So, the health department's on a different AT&amp;T bill.
Yes, they are.
Are they under a state contract though?
I don't know. I'll have to find out.
Yeah. Is this Corissa Franklin or Ena Nurse? Is that Ena Nurse or she, uh?
Got her employee IDs.
Yeah, but I didn't know if she was like the Ena Nurse and she was coming in here to fill in, or she was actually the Grant County Nurse because she lives in Ena.
Looks like Ena de Ramon.
Ena, Metford, Ena de, yeah, so.
I mean, I haven't.
I'm just curious.
I'll find out who she is.
Yeah. I didn't know who was placed, um, bone then.
And who knows, they may have had somebody quit and rehired three different times since then.
Yeah.
No more than what they're paying.
And the problem is, is they reduced our nurse, whatever we had. Our nurse, we had her and she was a such and such rating and they, they wanted a lower grade nurse.
Yeah.
And while she quit, and we had. And while she quit, and we had the money to do it, and we didn't even have an input from them.
Oh, yeah, it's a racket. You got any more Max over there?
Uh...
Yeah, you can go ahead and finish those Max, that'd be fine.
Oh, he does have some.
I do have, I haven't finished this folder here yet, but...
So, those are... Did they change receiving offices? I don't think she is anymore at a receiving office.
Um, no, she's not anymore.
So, this is...
Let's see, let's get that out.
So, yeah.
Right, it was changed.
Yeah, so we'll need to get a different receiving, I thought.
Okay. Reminds that we need, there need to be a copy, need to be on this note.
Yeah, that's what they do on all of them. Well, that's up to you. Yeah, 'cause it just, it's just sitting up, or it just isn't nothing.
Well, the last one on the bunch.
They don't have any, that's why we talked about it.
Yeah, it was probably stuck to this other one.
Oh!
No, I didn't even put the right words up. No longer receiving report, no longer receiving agent. Will you fix that for me, please? Receiving officer, whatever.
Yeah, we would be in bad doodoo if we didn't get that on there. Someone would be mad at us.
Yours are about to pass me.
Hear the train whistle, do ya?
How do you like that?
Damn, there you go.
Cindy, do, do you, after we go through all of these, sign these down here, then?
Well, that's only for blankets.
Yeah, but like, they're, like, they're none of them, you know? Do you then sign, I mean, 'cause that's printed out, obviously, when, when you do blankets, then do you come in like this?
Either me or Ally.
Okay, you do, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I was just wondering.
Yeah.
Need a bottle of water.
Oh, I'd take one, thank you. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Do you have a problem down there?
No, no.
I'm just kidding ya. Now he gets upset and learned it, you know?
It didn't have a window on it.
Oh, yeah.
It's like the office door.
Mm-hmm.
Kinda wasn't one with a window in there, so you could at least see.
Right.
She signed the transfer.
Oh, it needs transferred. Why did Desi have to mail to Farmer's Grain?
Mailed a deal for my Clyde Road out here. I, I gotta get a temporary easement.
Oh.
We mailed it out, they're not supposed to talk to.
The rights and all that, yeah. Landowner's rights.
Yeah. Thank goodness, that Quinlan Road deal out there had thirty-eight parcels. I mean, you'd have a five-hundred-dollar mailing bill on that.
You're kidding.
She made a copy for each one of us, and you wanted one, Cindy.
On what?
On that, maybe you just looked at...
Oh.
I don't know, just explained it, that was good. Ken told me this morning that Dean had called back up there, and they had fourteen-hundred gallons instead of seven-hundred gallons of oil, and wanted us to send a couple trucks in, so we did.
Yeah.
But, uh, Tim also told me that they said that Johnny said that some of the guys was upset. I don't know anything about it. Johnny's not there today, but, uh, I didn't know that you knew anything about that.
Yeah, nobody said anything to me about it.
Yeah. We're not upset, we're not upset. I mean, so, you gotta kinda take what Johnny says sometimes with a grain of salt.
I just wish it was about fifteen degrees hotter.
Yeah, I know.
I told, I told those guys to drag your feet.
Well, yesterday, it got warm, you know?
Yeah.
Of course, it was a nice day, it wasn't too bad, but I thought it was really gonna get hot for a while, and it didn't get as bad as I thought.
Oh, it was a beautiful day, yes.
Yeah, it was.
Okay, here you go. Welcome. Yeah, there you go.
And I'm certain it'll just be, you know, of course, yeah, the chipper's getting along today, but I'm...
I, I hope it's fixed.
I do, too. I'm certain it'll just be Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, this week.
Think we'll be done?
No.
I don't think so either.
But I'm sure you're like I am, you don't want to send any more people on that, you have to.
Yeah. We've got a ton of stuff. I've got two oil companies that donated me rock, that wants us to haul. Venture wants us to haul the dirt for our covert that they're putting in up on Clyde, up on Sandy Corner Road. I just told them, I said, we'll deal with it as we get to it, you know? Ain't no, no way we can be everywhere.
Yeah. Did I move to review?
You did.
Yeah, I, I will move to approve once Cindy gets through hers.
I just, I forgot to write it down.
Yeah.
Cindy, here's this.
Next item of business is taken care of, see? Except the moving.
She's probably leaving, and all the real work's beginning.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, we're gonna get out of here quick.
Think it'd be a good day for a fire drill?
Chinese one.
I thought it could turn into.
I can never do that in Main, on Main Street and stuff.
Yeah.
You gotta run around, you gotta run around, and the purpose is, just kind of fun.
Yeah, and then at, at school, you always gotta, had to get out on the playground.
Yeah, take twenty minutes for a five-minute fire drill.
Yeah. Well, there's all them kids that didn't mind.
I was one of them.
I was, too. I was too.
Which we do need to do a test of our panic buttons because they've had, they've done a lot.
We've talked about that for a year.
I'll make it done. How about I make it happen?
You make it happen.
I'll make it happen. If I make it, if I write a note, then it hopefully happens.
You'll lose the note. You'll lose the note.
Yeah, yeah, I lost the note.
Oh, yeah, that, that'd be, I know the people that's doing that, they were, they actually, um, Derek Stacey used to own that company and sold it to his friends. He's done that for ACO before and he actually did that at our, did it at Naco.
Presentation.
Yeah, did that Naco. He's presented that several times. He just, he went up to California, they just went up to California, you hear, maybe a month or two ago and did it out there.
Oh, wow.
So, you're gonna get a good one.
Yeah, good, good. Well, I picked the right one. Because of that big horse. The other was new charter account. I already know the charter accounts. Need that one.
He could've taught it, huh?
Yeah.
Is that the one that's out at Boy City?
I'm not sure where it is. I just know it was, it's active.
There was something on my desk from Coda.
Oh, you mean the Coda conference? No, it's in Tulsa.
Well, there's like a district.
Yeah.
Coda.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
At Boy City.
Yeah, I think Penny's maybe going to that, or you're going to Boy City to her conference, but...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I saw that and I, you know, I already gotta go once this fall out there, I don't wanna do it twice.
Well, I thought I'll go to Tulsa and stay with my sister and then I'll have to take her to, and I get to see my sister.
Come stay with your sister.
Yeah, sure, come on, we have fun time.
What, no?
She has a cheek.
No.
Karen does.
That's your baby sister, right?
No, I'm the baby.
No, you're the ba-, I always forget that.
No, she's like, uh...
That's, that's Logan's mom, right?
Logan's mom, yeah.
And Heath Farrell's mother-in-law. Yeah, he's Blackwell Boys.
Oh, he is?
He graduated my oldest sister's class.
I didn't know that.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're still over there. He still works for the post office. Part of it is those reverse mortgages.
Oh, yeah?
She works, she's... Then my niece, let's see, she works at, is it Saint John's?
Saint Francis?
Saint Francis. In the surgeries. She used to be the one that was in charge of the robotic.
Oh, wow. That's cool.
She did all the updates and, you know, but now she's back in the actual operating room.
They don't let just anybody do that.
No, no, you have to be, pretty much know what you're doing to be in charge of the surgical robot.
Yeah, you don't want someone taking that out at night, you know?
Or if they update the wrong thing and then it doesn't do what it's supposed to do in the surgery or what, you know?
It's not like running a backhoe.
It's always doing an appendectomy, oops, we're doing a knee replacement today.
Yeah, it's not like running a backhoe.
Well, you won't see, you won't see eyeglasses on Jenna any longer. She had, um, laser surgery on Friday, yeah.
Sounds good.
Yeah. You'll see her walking around with her cool shades on. She said she still wears glasses and she's like ten, so it'll be a new thing for her not to have that.
She'll probably still do this.
Yeah, pushing it.
It won't be anything there.
I started wearing them till I was in my forties, but Ronnie wore them at her very young age and both my boys had to wear them at a young age.
I make a motion to approve, uh, purchase orders and travel claims.
Well, before I second that, do we wanna go back to, uh, transfers?
Or do you wanna do another motion and then just do a transfer and a PO approving that at the same time?
That'll work.
Okay.
Okay, so I second that.
Um, Hess moves, Ronk seconds to approve payment of purchase orders and travel claims as presented, all in favor?
Bobbit?
Aye.
Ronk?
Aye.
Hess?
Aye.
All eyes motion carried unanimously. Okay, we need to now, uh, return to B and C and we can do that in one motion.
I move to, uh, re, re, no, refer back to item B. And approve the transfer from contingency and general government in the amount of twenty-five thousand forty-seven dollars and, is that sixteen?
Yes.
Sixteen cents from general government contingency to capital outlay for fairgrounds improvement.
And, and approve the PO?
And approve.
Oh, and approve the, the purchase order.
For the final.
For the same amount too?
No, no, the final payment's a hundred and twenty-four thousand.
Okay, for a hundred and twenty-four thousand six hundred and sixty dollars and sixty-two cents.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Uh, Ronk moved, Hess seconded to approve the transfer of appropriations from contingency county general government, twenty-five thousand forty-seven dollars and sixteen cents to, uh, fairgrounds capital aid improvement as a loan to be paid back before the end of FY nineteen and to approve the final payment to cross on construction or number thirteen in the amount of one twenty-four thousand six hundred and sixty-sixty-two. All in favor?
Bobbit?
Aye.
Ronk?
Aye.
Hess?
Aye. All eyes motion carried unanimously. And Cindy, you will need to keep a, open a folder file on this to track that.
Yes, I will.
So, when we get ready to pay that back, they will actually have to encumber a PO to, to bring it back. I think it's cleaner to do a PO and run it and then deposit it back than to do, you need to talk to...
And have them write a check back to...
Yeah, you need to talk to Cheryl Wilson about that.
Okay.
Then you'll have to do it from the sales tax account, through the contingency.
Cause, and I'm, yeah, because see, we're, we are paying a PO to them because we can't transfer it.
Right.
Well, now wait a minute, I actually...
You don't know if we should do the transfer for...
Actually, I think, did they not say that you cannot transfer from county general to a cash account? You cannot do a transfer, it's got to be a PO, right?
No.
No?
No, that's what we do with the protest. With the, with the protest account when we were not knocking warrants, we did transfer. However, I, they're out of, they're out of funds now, completely out of funds, is that correct?
Well, we're...
They don't have enough.
Well, I'm saying, that's general money though, but they are completely out of funds, correct?
They're twenty-three thousand dollars short. Twenty-four thousand one ninety-one. They're twenty-four thousand one ninety-one, yeah.
That's on the building and not on the appliances?
They, they didn't do, I, I thought they had the money, so we said pay for the appliances. We should've taken the loan, a lease purchase on the equipment. I thought when we was doing all that, we penciled it in and we had the money. So now, but the auditors and the DA said we can take it out of contingency as long as it's paid back by the end of the year.
We don't think this will affect our courthouse budget at all?
No, no, it's just, it's, it's a, it's no different, the money's there, it's a loan. Yeah, it's legal, the district attorney said it's legal.
I'm not saying it's not legal, I'm just wondering if it is gonna affect our budgets when we're looking at how much money we have to deal with.
Well, not yet because we haven't even got a budget. We're gonna use our six-thirty budget, so, no, it'll show up as in our contingency. Yeah, we, our budget's way less than it was last, I mean, our budget money's way down, but that's on the agenda for later discussion.
We're gonna go by six-thirty and this is gonna have...
Yeah, this is six-thirty, so it, it won't, our, yeah, it won't, it just, it won't affect it.
This fiscal year's budget at all.
No, uh-uh, no, will not. All right, so, all in favor?
Bobbit?
Aye.
Ronk?
Aye.
Hess?
Aye. All eyes motion carried unanimously.
Okay, do we need to, we need to sign here?
Oh, yes, sorry. I am not sure though that you still fo- follow up with Cheryl Wilson on that.
Okay, I will.
To see how that should've been done.
Okay.
I, I'm not so sure. They didn't, I was thinking, I think if Steven, when Steven was down here and said we could do that, I was thinking he said we need to do it with exchange of checks or warrants.
Well, do you want me to do that before we actually process it through? Or I can go have her do a PO real quick from contingents, I mean, it's gonna have to be a PO from contingency and then we'll make it payable to the fair one and then in turn you have to do it back.
You're not supposed to, you're not supposed to, you're not supposed to take money out of budget account to cash accounts. So, I think a, I think a warrant would be more appropriate.
Well, I mean, she can do a PO real quick, so she needs to do a PO out of contingency for the twenty-five thousand.
Yeah, and attach that, void that, let, let's rescind that. Let's rescind that.
Rescind the transfer.
Rescind the transfer and, and show it as backup paperwork on our PO.
Okay, I make a motion to rescind the transfer.
And to use it as backup paperwork for he, to issue a...
Yes.
Twenty-five oh forty-seven sixteen, can you encumber and bring us in a print out, a, or a PO from contingency? And then we're gonna just, and it needs to be payable to the, uh, fair improvement. And then in turn, when they pay it back, we're gonna do it like as a check rather than transfers. Okay, so if you can... For twenty-five, sure, for twenty-five thousand oh forty-seven sixteen.
We did both motions together.
And it needs to encumber out of general contingency.
We rescind this, we're gonna rescind this too.
Two-nine-nine-nine.
Right.
And then it needs to be payable to the Grant County Fair Board, right?
Right.
To the Grant County Fair Board.
Yeah, Cindy, until you deposit the Grant County Fair Board, you can't send that out. Cause the money is...
Oh, yeah, then, well, no.
So, yeah, so you'll rescind both of those and have to run that, this PO through next month, next week, yeah.
We're, we're, do you wanna just wait and do it next week?
Yeah, well, let's go ahead and do this so we'll have this in place, but let's, let's, let's void the, the motion and make this...
Why don't we just call the DA and see what he says? Before we get ahead of ourselves.
Okay? Let me, hold on, I'll call you back.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I, I really think he said you had to do it that way. But let's ask him again.
District Attorney's Office, this is Steven.
Hi, Steven, we're in the board meeting, this is Cindy and the board has a question.
Steven, we're getting ready to, uh, loans money to the Grant County Fair Board. They're short about twenty-four thousand dollars of, of making their final payment. Do we need, can we do that through a transfer of appropriations? Cause I didn't think we could do a transfer from a budget to, to cash. Do we need to make that in the form of a PO and then deposit it into the fairgrounds? Encumber...
So, so my understanding is that when you talk to the auditors, that the auditor said that it was okay to do it as long as the loan was paid back within that calendar year.
Correct.
Before the end of the, rather, before the end of that fiscal year.
Correct.
So, um, and so we're talking about, um, FY...
Nineteen.
Nineteen monies?
Yes.
Okay. And so, um, so, yeah, you would just need to do it in the form of a PO with a check that they would deposit.
And not as a transfer of appropriation?
I, I, I think it, 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 it just, it's just clear if you do it as a PO, um, with the check that the auditors can follow and trace.
Okay.
Okay, that's what I thought you said. Okay, thank you for our clarification.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
So, we'll rescind that motion.
Okay, I, I move to rescind.
Rescind.
Second.
So, Hess moves, Ronk seconds to rescind the motion to do the transfer and to, um, pay the PO. So, what we need to, all in favor?
Bobbit?
Aye.
Ronk?
Aye.
Hess?
Aye.
All eyes motion carried. So, what we need to do now is we need to do a PO, if we can get that today, and that can be the backup paperwork we put on there for the vice of the ADA to, to do that in, as a warrant on this, this one right there.
Oh, I can have a check too.
And, and, uh, we're at the Grant County Fair... So, then Cindy...
Oh, yeah, cause it's, it's fair ground improvement, so, okay.
Yeah. And then hold that one, cause we'll need to get the money in the bank and hold that payment till next, so go ahead and get a PO for the twenty, whatever that is. And then we'll need a motion once we get that, when it comes back in here to prove it.
Hello, okay, so what I need right now is we're gonna hold to actually pay to cross them, but if you could go ahead and encumber and print out a PO from the contingency account for the twenty-five thousand oh forty-seven sixteen and make it payable to the Grant County Fair Improvement Sales Tax. And then if you can bring it in, we'll go ahead and approve it and then we'll run this other one through, cause we'll have to get it deposited into the account and all that, okay? Thank you. Okay, bye.
Okay, so we'll wait till she comes out and we'll go on down the agenda till she brings that in. Blanket purchase orders, do we have blank, yes?
I make a motion to approve blanket purchase orders.
Second.
Hess moves, Ronk seconds to approve the blanket purchase orders as presented, all in favor?
Bobbit?
Aye.
Ronk?
Aye.
Hess?
Aye.
All eyes motion carried unanimously. Um, allocation of alcohol beverage tax for August? It is twelve thousand one hundred and forty-one forty-one.
How much? Excuse me?
Twelve thousand one hundred and forty-one dollars and forty-one cents.
Move to approve.
Second.
Ronk moves, Hess seconds to approve the allocation of alcohol beverage tax for August twenty eighteen in the amount of twelve thousand one hundred and forty-one forty-one, all in favor?
Bobbit?
Aye.
Ronk?
Aye.
Hess?
Aye.
All eyes motion carried unanimously. The actual tax certification fee for August twenty eighteen in the amount of seventy-five dollars.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Hess moves, Ronk seconds to approve the mortgage tax certification fee for August twenty eighteen in the amount of seventy-five dollars, all in favor?
Bobbit?
Aye.
Ronk?
Aye.
Hess?
Aye.
All eyes, motion carried unanimously. Monthly office reports, let's have those first. Ronk, what would be the, uh, Can Oakland Network election filing fee expense for three thousand three hundred and ninety dollars and eighty-one cents?
Pardon me, for what?
The Can Oakland Network filing fees for three thousand three hundred and ninety dollars and eighty-one cents?
That's the money that I spend on computers.
Okay, so it's not filing fee expense?
No, it's from the fund.
Okay.
It's from the filing fee.
Well, the purpose on her, her report says filing fee expense, that probably needs to say, probably, the, the reason probably needs to say computers, not filing fee expense. The purpose, see the purpose?
So you want me to pencil that in?
Yeah, you need to mark that out and initial it and say it's for computers. And don't forget to give them an inventory number.
It's state.
Okay. Okay, you need to still let her know so that when they come in to audit them or the state item, she'll know that it's not part of the county.
I move to approve the monthly officer's reports for August eighteen, two thousand eighteen, subject to audit for the Assessor, County Clerk, Court Clerk Election Board. Did we have?
We did not have the help.
Did not have?
Yeah, yeah, we did, yeah, it was zero.
Okay, Health Department, Sheriff and Treasurer.
Second.
Ronk moved, Hess seconded to approve the monthly officer's report for August twenty eighteen, subject to audit for the Assessor, County Clerk, Court Clerk, Election Board, Health Department, Sheriff and Treasurer, all in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Wrong.
Aye.
Pass.
All eyes motion carried unanimously. Well, we're gonna use that, that, um, the, yeah, that transfer and note on there that we talked to the D.
But do we need to?
I put that it has funds for sales tax account, they don't.
Does it, but does it need to be payable?
It needs to be payable to that.
Grant County Fair Improvement.
Grant County Fairground Improv, whatever that account.
Fair Improvement dash S.T. is how it's listed.
Okay, however it's listed, cause it's not going into the county, the fair, but, yeah.
So Fair Improvement.
Yes, yeah.
Dash S.T. and then we'll need to change it on the system.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll have, we can just set that up.
Yeah, okay, so, um.
Do you wanna do the jail report?
Yeah, I was looking here. Um, we need to make sure we redact all the social security numbers.
I do before I scan, yeah, and I don't send them anywhere. Yeah, he just brought it to me this morning, I usually wipe them all out.
Yeah.
I just was doing that until I can go wipe them all out. I need to see if they can just redact it before, can you not, can you not take it out before they won't let you?
Then we'll subject it to audit, right?
Yep.
Yes, and we did vote on that, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I would, uh, move to approve the monthly jail report from the Sheriff's Office.
Acknowledge it.
Acknowledge it.
Second.
Hess moves, Ronk seconds to acknowledge the monthly jail report from the Sheriff's Office for August twenty eighteen, all in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Wrong.
Aye.
Pass.
Aye.
Uh, uh, all eyes, motion carried unanimously. Declaration of surplus, twenty eighteen, one fifteen for ceiling fan. Inventory, uh, two oh four point oh one. Purchased in two thousand for thirty-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents.
So, uh, moved surplus.
Second.
Ronk moves, Hess seconds to approve the surplus of the ceiling fan. Resolution twenty eighteen, one fifteen from the Assessor's Office, two oh four point one for thirty-nine ninety-five, all in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Wrong.
Aye.
Pass.
Aye.
All eyes motion carried unanimously. Resolution to dispose of, it's been junked.
I make a motion to dispose of.
Second.
Um, Hess moves, Ronk seconds to dispose by junking of the ceiling fan. Two oh four point oh one from the Assessor's Office. Purchased, uh, December two thousand, thirty-nine ninety-nine, all in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Wrong.
Aye.
Pass.
Aye.
All eyes motion carried unanimously. Let's get that P.O. taken care of so she can have those. Let's return to item C and approve.
Uh, so moved.
Second.
Ronk moves, Hess seconds to return to item C and to approve.
Yes. Okay, we're ready for it, can you buzz over there, we're ready for it, on the COM data thing. Thank you, bye-bye.
Purchase order one oh oh four to the Grant County Fair Improvement for funds for their sales tax from the county contingency thing. It's a loan to be paid back prior to end of FY nineteen for the S.A.N.I. and A.D.A., um, all in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Wrong.
Aye.
Pass.
Aye.
All eyes motion carried unanimously. Okay. We can continue down the agenda. The implementation of COM data fleet fuel card statewide contract, SW one four one oh one for Grant County. Oh!
Hey, sorry, just crossed it off.
That's all right, we're ready for you.
Okay, so I printed these off, I don't know if you guys needed them or not. But these are, this is a state contract for the COM data cards. And then, here's one for you. And I also printed off the usage instructions.
That's a very helpful sheet, bring that to balance it out, yeah.
This is kind of our policy?
Yeah, it's pretty much just what you can use it for. You know the difference between that and your P. card, what you're supposed to use them for.
Okay.
This is why I'm trying to create a setup for new vendor on this one, cause it meets the check and it's payable just like that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Passion, thank you.
Have we been able to obtain a copy of the policy that the Sheriff's Office uses for that?
That was my job, do you have a policy on your COM data?
What is your purchasing policy? What's your policy procedure when you issue those to your employees, what's your policy for usage? How do you?
The only thing ours will work on is fuel and, and repairs.
Right, that's what we're getting at, because we can't use our P. cards for fuel for the counties. Like if we're traveling out of county or out of state and need.
But it's just technically, it's just a fuel, when you sign fuel.
But how do you tra-, uh, Stephen Young, Stephen Young wants us to have a policy on how you track it, in other words mileage and who uses it.
It's all when you swipe the card.
It's all their mileage.
It asks for an ID number.
Asks for your mileage.
We have one card issued for each vehicle and then everybody has their own PIN number. So no matter what vehicle you're in, it tracks that vehicle, that card with that.
So you can tell if that vehicle's using ten miles to the gallon?
Yes.
Or twenty miles, and if it goes to two, that whoops, something's wrong. Gotcha.
So we have the pump, it'll ask for, um, my, you know, your PIN number.
So, so you, so you, you issue the card to the vehicle and then each one has a PIN number to be able to use that.
Yeah, and the car stays with the vehicles that way no matter, cause we jump into.
So then you know if you're the one who fueled up this vehicle or if someone else.
Lives by the PIN number.
Yes, and then there's a print, we get a print out every month.
I've seen that.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
That's how that's tracked.
I don't see a problem with it, do you guys?
No.
No.
I mean, we could just say that, yeah, I guess our policy would be that we, um, issue cards to vehicles, not to people.
And it'd be monthly presented to the board?
Well, it'll come in on the, the purchase, the, the blanket.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
The report will be with the blanket and that's when you look, I've, I've seen that every month.
Yes.
And it's very itemized, very detailed.
Every deputy.
Right.
And every time they've used it, it'll show what vehicle they were in.
Right. So, okay.
And that'll be the same way with parts, like if you have a flat tire, sure.
Yes.
Then it just shows up to that.
And, and our, our cards, we're, I don't know that we have found a place yet that it doesn't work. So if we're on the road and have a flat tire.
Yeah.
It's assigned to a vehicle.
To pay for it.
You know, a lot of those stations aren't good on P.O.
Those are not.
But yeah, it cannot be used for, it won't work for lodging, it will not go through for food, it's only for vehicle like.
Care or fuel.
Yeah, okay.
Well, I think this right here is your policy, cause it says right here, it must be assigned to a vehicle that it's what it's used for.
Yeah, that's why I printed these off for you guys, yeah.
Yeah, this is just it, that's your, that's your policy right there. There is your policy, okay.
You don't have to reinvent the wheel.
No.
That's right.
So.
That's why I printed that off.
Uh, we need a motion to, what do we need to do to get the ball rolling?
I just have to call, there's a, there should be contact list in here. If it's not in here, I give it to her on Friday.
Yeah.
But it's, it's also all with the state contract, they'll give you a person to con- contact and use that.
I think I saw it, I was thumbing through.
Yeah, like it should be in here somewhere.
Yeah.
So how about, can you motion that Brandon and I will work to get it implemented?
That would work.
Okay.
Okay.
I, I, I move to adopt the, uh, uh.
Statewide.
State, state contract of the COM data, uh, for vehicle parts maintenance and fuel. Um, and adopt their, their, uh.
And we wanna.
Policy and procedures.
We wanna get cards for each district.
For certain vehicles.
Okay.
Yeah, there's gotta be assigned to a vehicle.
Do y'all wanna just provide a list to me of who you, what the vehicles?
Vehicles, not the people, the vehicles, and then we'll have to set up the people.
I would like to have this.
You have to have a list of the vehicles and then you have to have a list of the people that we're gonna assign PIN numbers to, because you're gonna have two different lists.
So you'll need, we'll need that. I'll set up a little sheet of what we need and send out to you, how's that?
Okay, that'll work.
And then you, and so Brandon and I will work together.
So did you second that?
I seconded that.
So Ronk moved, Hess seconded to, uh, appoint Cindy Pratt and Brandon Fetters to implement the COM data fleet fuel card and to use the, uh, State of Oklahoma Department of Central Services Central Purchasing Agent Paper on the Use of COM Data Vehicle Parts and Maintenance Statewide Contract as our policy. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Wrong.
Aye.
Pass.
Yeah.
All eyes motion carried unanimously. Thank you very much, and we will provide you a list of.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm welcome.
Thank you, Brandon.
Road crossings?
I have not seen, he called me about this, but I have not seen it, so I'm gonna call Robert and see if he's looked at this while we go do the, the, the next part, if that would be all right with you guys to, to skip the road crossing permits and to go down to M. And we can come back to road crossing if that will work.
Okay.
Yep.
Can I ask, is there gonna be any discussion on in?
I have some updates. So, uh.
Okay, do, we, we don't adjourn.
No, we need a motion. Let's see, uh, we need a motion to move from K. to M. and to proceed.
I make a motion to move from K. to M.
And to proceed on our annual.
And look, and do our annual jail inspection.
Second.
Hess moved, Ronk seconded to move from item K. to item M. And to do the annual walkthrough inspection of the Sheriff's Office and jail facility, all in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Wrong.
Aye.
Aye.
All eyes motion carried, so Cindy, you have to come with us.
Yes.
We're not in race. We're not in recess.
I'm here. I'm getting my coat.
I don't think that would be that hard. He looks behind the wall. He looks behind you.
Oh. Okay. Come in. Okay. Do I first?
Okay.
I would say if I were five, I would do one of those. I will. So I will. So. No. No, we can do it fast too. I worry about it.
All right. See you, Penny.
Oh my God, it was so much fun.
Are you the one Nicole wrote in the US room?
Yes, who are you, the doctor?
Yes.
Is it too late to do a blanket?
I just now thought of that.
No.
Yeah.
Yeah, depends on who you're asking. Yeah, depends on who you're asking.
You like it though.
Alrighty, we are back in our board reading from our jail inspection, our annual jail inspection. Scott, I forgot to ask you, we do need an updated inventory from you and I forgot to ask for that. It was over there. Let's make a motion to return to item L and to approve the road crossing permit.
Second.
Bob it moved has seconded to return to item L and to approve the road crossing permit from Puller Oil Company. On favor?
Bob it.
Aye.
Wrong.
Aye.
Has.
Aye.
All eyes motion to unanimously.
I've got a blanket that I'd forgot about before we adjourned Alex's. Gonna work on that now.
I make a motion, we take a five-minute recess.
Second.
Has smooth, wrong seconds to take a five-minute recess, all in favor?
Bob it. Aye. Wrong.
Aye.
Has.
Aye.
All eyes motion to unanimously.
Sorry.
Good, thanks very much.
Everyone.
Oh my God. Girls.
No.
Who was that coming in office?
Oh, it's like back from college. He's like, you know, which are, option here, he was coming to get some, a new MacBook and first information.
Aye.
I'm gonna give him some.
Is who?
Um, yeah. She was probably at a school where she did stop. You know how you have to stop and change track for what you're thinking about?
Oh.
She wasn't.
Yeah.
She could just keep on going.
That would've made you wait, huh?
I lied out for a minute. No, not you.
Oh, I was gonna say, I wouldn't have made you wait, you turd. Here.
Thank you much.
You're welcome.
Leave me alone now.
Leave me alone now. I'm trying to pay Zell. Trying to work. Pie bills. I need to pay bills as soon as. I should've already hit the bank. I guess I can pay no. All I want more is to pay bills.
I know.
But at least I can.
I make a motion to come out of recess.
Second.
Eleven thirty-three, has moved, wrong seconds to come out of recess and back into open session. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Hess, I mean, wrong.
Aye.
Hess, sorry about that.
All eyes motion carried unanimously.
I was writing Hess when I was trying to call him.
And that brings us, the next item is to review of the Grant County FY eighteen nineteen budget. The budget has been delivered to Buddy. He is, I believe, in the process of working on it. He sent me an email Friday morning, wasn't it Cindy?
I think so.
Or Friday afternoon, I don't remember when, but he said he would not have it ready today. So, he hopes to have it ready, I don't know, later this week or by Monday. But when I did meet with them, he did give me some numbers. Our delinquent taxes right now are nine point oh nine percent delinquent. This is all as of June thirtieth. Our number is down from fiscal year eighteen, forty thousand three hundred nineteen dollars. Our balance is down two hundred and seven thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars and seventy-two cents. So, we will be, we are working into our reserves. So, with that, while our evaluations are up, we are working into our reserves. So, we need to be conscious of that. He did also give me a readout of cash funds and said cash funds can be used for numerous things. I was gonna ask you, Robin, on your cash funds stand at twenty-five thousand five hundred and ninety-three thirty-eight, June thirtieth. What can you use your cash funds to, on?
Software and nothing other than basically software.
So, what have you been, what have you, what's the last thing you?
Well, I, we were able to buy our car from that, I believe. Anything with a VI stuff, but we can't use it for salary or anything like that.
I don't think you bought your car out of that.
Did we not?
No, I think you ju-
I inherited that.
Yeah, no, you didn't buy your car out of that. Your car came out of your, it came out of revow, obviously, but it was budgeted, not the cash. So, like last year, you paid warrants of one thousand three hundred and fifty-three fifty-eight. But I didn't know what, what, what that was. And you have in reserves lapsed forty dollars. Didn't know what that was. The, the sheriff's service, you have a lapsed one thousand four hundred and ninety-one forty-seven, and he says that needs to be canceled. So, you might get with Penny and see what that is.
What account?
Uh, your sheriff's surface?
Service fee account.
Surface vehicle?
How much?
One thousand four hundred and ninety-one dollars and forty-seven cents. Said that needs to be canceled. So. That'll be putting money back in your account, so. Anyway, that's what we've got, so I've tried to get with him and meet him. That, we discussed what other counties are doing. He said that it's definitely no big raises or anything like that into other counties. People are, you know, the little Phil's been here and left, and we need to kind of keep that in mind, so. That's the update. Hopefully, he'll get a back. What I had him do is everything everybody put in for, we've put in the budget, just to look at it, to see how much that's eaten into, to everything. And obviously, it's gonna have to be changed because every office, like Robin, when you turned yours back in, originally you asked for fifteen fifty, and then when you turned it back in, you only asked for fourteen seventy-five. So, whatever, and I know people have changed, but it's, so we're gonna have to, you can't pay first deputies in the clerk's office different than the first deputy in the assessor's office. So, everybody's got to be equal, so we'll have to get some equalization out of there. One thing that I did bounce off to him that I think will help us greatly is currently on our retirement, our employees are paying eight and a half percent, and we are paying, I believe, ten percent. What, what the options are, is employees have to participate and employers have to participate, but it can be at different percentages. And the, the least amount the employee can contribute is three and a half percent, and right now they're giving eight and a half percent. They're being taxed on that money, they're paying in, you know, it's all that. So, if we were to change that and if the county were to pick up the additional five percent, it doesn't cost the county, it costs us the five percent, but it doesn't add to our FICA, it doesn't add to our SUDA, it doesn't add to our FEUDA. But it puts money back in their pockets. All it does is adds, is that we pay the retirement. It, in essence, it's a five percent true cash increase for them.
So, you're talking about lowering our contribution and increasing?
The county contribution.
I like that.
Uh, uh, it's, you're already paying taxes, it's not gonna change their, your tax bracket. It just puts more cash back, and the only thing it costs the county is the five percent, it doesn't cost us the seven point six five percent FICA, it doesn't cost us our SUDA and our FEUDA or anything like that. So, that's a true five percent cash balance back into their pockets. So, that is something that I'm looking at. I'm also talking to him about our longevity. Right now, we're presently paying twenty-five dollars a year for each year's service. If we're truly wanting to reward our employees that have been here over a length of time, we could look, I haven't looked that up, but to see what this, the state has a longevity that, we can't go above that, but I think it's a pretty healthy longevity. That's something that we could look at because that again, you can change that. You know, once you give a raise, you can't say to them, "I'm sorry dude, we don't have the money this year, so we're gonna pull your money away." But, but something like that is something. Also, if you'll recall, I introduced legislation last year to change our 401 matching from fifty dollars to one hundred. It made it out of the Senate and it stalled in the House. The representative that stalled it in the House has term limited out. I am running that bill again, and I have great confidence that that will come about.
And what is that?
It, it, it's our matching retirement for all.
Nationwide deal.
Fifty dollars, the county puts in his fifty dollars to one hundred dollars that the county, the county could put in.
Do you know who might offer that for you?
Well, on the Senate side, on the Senate side, it is going to be Stan Skloski out of Tulsa, or, I don't, he's not in Tulsa, but he's around Tulsa. And Croft Rock carried it in the House last year, and he didn't run for reelection, so we're not sure. And they've changed the committees. The committee that one ran in is not a committee now. So, we're going to try to talk to McCall and see who, which committee he would consider appointment to and try to find someone in, in that committee. We're obviously wanting to pick up someone that's, that's been there a while and that knows pensions and finances. So, that, that's an option. Something that did pass last year, comes effective November first of this year, is a, is a, you can give a, it's not a bonus, but it's a, based on, if you set criteria down that you have to do so much training, or you have to reach, you reach so much in your job, it's performance, that's the word I'm looking for. It's performance-based. You can give a percentage of their base salary in a performance base. So, but you have to have really good documentation, so there's another option that we could look at instead of giving increases in our base pay. So, we've got some options out there that are, that aren't for this time forward. So, those are some of the things we're looking at.
Was that, and that, you said that just passed the?
It, it passed like, it came out this year, but it doesn't go in effect till November first, but you have got to have a very stringent performance, what is expected, you know?
Like a policy.
Policy, a very, yes. I am working with Cleveland County, they're the ones that, that worked on that with their HR. I'm trying to, I said, if you're getting your policy, why should I reinvent it? I would like to look at what their policy is and see what they're going to try to implement and do. So, it would be something of a percentage basis, so. And that one really surprised me that that one made it out when we couldn't get the hundred, the fifty to a hundred. But no, you can give them a base salary, you know, a performance increase, which, you know, but no, that would be good for our employees, so. That is pretty, any questions on the budget?
I was, the, the, the performance base, they just passed legislation that the assessor and first deputy has to have like sixty-three hours of credits more, more than the other ones. They only have to have like thirty-nine, but I'm not sure of the time period. I don't, I don't know if we have eighteen months to get those sixty-four hours.
I think you have eight, I think you have eighteen, yeah, I'm pretty sure, pretty sure it is.
I'm like, oh, we're gonna be in class all the time.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
They spend all the county's money traveling to the class.
Right.
I would like to point out that ACO still has their online, uh, training. All of my guys have got their blood pathogen that has to be renewed every year.
I just set up everyone in the courthouse.
Okay.
All of our employees that aren't officers, even some of the officers, I still set up one.
They, they, we have to have that, even officers have to have the blood and bone pathogens.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I send a lot of them.
So, okay, good.
I haven't done one yet, but yes, I do.
We were gonna check too, to see if maybe some of those courses could be like our elective courses, if we can use those. That way, we're not traveling all the time.
Right, right, exactly.
Just trying to save some money there.
Yeah, I told them that since some of those, those courses are CLEET certified courses, I don't know why they wouldn't count towards their, their CTEs as well.
Yeah, right, yeah.
So, I was like, if it'll count for CLEET, I don't know why it wouldn't count for their stuff.
Yeah, we'll just have to check and get it approved to do that because I, I enjoy these classes.
Noty probably would be, who, is, does noty?
That would be the tax commission.
Probably your tax commission, yeah, you're right, probably be your tax commission. So, I know like when it's been raining, we've done our forklift training and our defensive driving, and you can take up to four per quarter, and September first starts the new quarter. So, we've, I think everybody's done four, except maybe a couple in our, so. But that is, that, that is, and it's online, and it's some really good, especially that bloodborne pathogen, they updated it, and it is really, really a good one. I mean, you do a good job, but that one's very, very good, and makes you learn it because you have to take a test at the end.
And technically, to teach that, I'm supposed to go get certified, that, but if we do it through the online, I don't have to. That's one of the, another reason why I wanted people to do the online course, because it just saves me one less class that I have to go, go to.
But anyway, yeah, and that's something that doesn't hit our budget because right now ACO pays for those, that costs ACO, but they pay for those, so.
Are you saying that our evaluations are up, but our reserves are down?
That is what, that, yeah, our reserves are down, let's see, well, yeah, our balance is down two hundred and seven thousand, two hundred and forty-two seventy-two.
But that's because we have spent money on the courthouse, where as before, we never have.
And our appropriate, he says our appropriated fund, his balance is gonna be down forty thou-, I don't know how that works, but that's what, that's Buddy's handwriting.
Right, right.
That's what he gave me.
Yeah, but we haven't started collecting this coming, there's taxes in there.
So, yeah, so, but.
But if we, if we start cutting, we have to, we can't cut the constitutional offices first before we cut, I'm sorry, but emergency management and free fare.
I understand. And what I'm, Penny, I'm not really into, to so much cutting as to maintaining.
And I, I get that too.
Yeah. So, the, the main, and, 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 well taken. I agree, well taken. Yeah, so. Alright, that brings us to, any other questions? Okay, brings us down to new business, to Cindy Suda with her new business.
I have none.
Max, do you have a new business?
No.
Pat, do you have any?
I have none.
And I have none, so commissioners' comments.
Can, can we move back up to?
Oh, sorry.
Uh, can I, I'd like to move, we move back up to item D and approve the new blanket purchase order.
Okay, wait a second.
Second.
Okay. Wrong moved, Hess second to return to item D and approve another blanket PO. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Wrong.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All eyes motion carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
She's supposed to take that out of District One.
Hey, come on now. I don't, I was wrong my second.
Alright, thanks everybody, appreciate that.
Okay, Pat, what, I'm gonna start with you, Pat, today.
Well.
Alright.
I'm gonna start Pat today.
Wow. Uh, we are, I guess the guys are trying up the chipper. I'm supposed to get a text, one way or the other, whether it's working properly or not. If it is, we're gonna start working on Trenton Road, Fast and Furious tomorrow. And we got a lot of rain.
No.
And the farther west you go, the worse it gets.
Or the better it gets, which, it depends which, which sense you mean.
It's, it's, uh, I think there's some low water crossing damages over in the Nash area. So, just be patient with us folks, we've only got three graders that are operable right now. And trying to get this chip ceiling done, so that's, that's all I got.
Max?
Well, started the paperwork on Clyde Road out there. We've trimmed it down, we've only got one easement that we're gonna have to procure, and that was with the grain company, the elevator there, Farmers Grain. We sent that out last week to do. Everything seems to be going alright. We got plenty of rain too. We've got more jobs lined up to do than we can get done. Everything seems to have slid because of the rain, and now everybody wants to do this project now. And I've been telling them, we can only get to so much, and we'll get to it just as soon as we can, so. Thank you, Brandon and Cindy, for working on the P card deal. I appreciate that very much. We get that done, I wanna get one set up for the Grant County Emergency Services Association, so we can identify and put that.
I'll send y'all out a little spreadsheet to fill out, and a little sign-up sheet, and who you want and what vehicles on that.
Yeah, appreciate that. Cindy, thank you for going down and meeting with ODOT. That money that you had referenced earlier, you asked the vice president up there, and he kind of said he wanted it to go through the DOTS, but just like we all thought up there, you pointed that out to him, that that was what was gonna happen, and sure enough, it looks like it. And ODOT's our friend, but they're also competing for the same money as we are. And that's something that I feel like that we, going up to Washington, we need to make some contacts through our contact list that we acquired, and state that this is what's happening, and we feel like that it needs to be changed a little bit, yeah.
I've reached out to the executive director in Missouri and in Arkansas. Of course, Arkansas really didn't know too much about it, and they are on the list as being, being qualified. And Missouri is finding out the same thing, that, you know, originally in the conversation, because they started the conversation, they were at the same meetings I've been at, Missouri has been, and Iowa has been. And it was the same thing. You start out talking to them, and, you know, ODOT thinks when you say rural bridges, they were thinking for rural counties, for counties. And when they finally released the, the paper, the paperwork for it, and then you get to reading through it, and it- um, and uh, it talks, starts talking about corridors and eligible prod, for projects. And um, they start, started saying, well, counties don't have corridors or bridges. I says, yes, we do, we definitely had, uh, and Pat, I'd like to know how many bridges has to be done on your SURB project, because my SURB project had nine bridges. And if that was not a corridor of bridges, I don't know what else is.
Yeah.
That's definitely a corridor of bridges. Um, it's all about bundling, and then also, I met with Dawn Sullivan down at O dot, and she said that the problem, Cindy, for counties is that, that, the, the, that's talking about bundling, and you're talking millions of dollars, and that these companies out there will not be able to bond with counties. I says, that is not true. I said, we let our SURB project, and my, my SURB project was broken down into two projects, and they were five million apiece, and I had numerous people bid on it. And I said, they will, and she kept trying to tell me they will not be able to bid on our projects if it's a county project. Now, Max, I, tell me what your knowledge is on that.
That is not correct. They can bid on it, they did on ours, they.
Absolutely.
They bid on me, I only had one bridge that replaced.
How about our S T Ps?
Yes.
And, and you look at, uh, look at the K County, I'll use them as a, a poster child, because they do so much with tribal funds, and they have to be bonded, but it's done through the county, it's a county project, and then the tribes reimburse them.
They reimburse them.
So it, that is just not true.
Yeah. I think that we need to get a hold of, and I'd be curious to know whether Pennsylvania was included in that.
No, they're not rural.
Really?
No, they're, it's got to be, got to be, it has to be considered a population, when you take the state population by the total square miles, it had, the density has to be less than one hundred per capita per square mile. There are twenty-six states that qualify for that. Um, let's see, it's a.
Well, that's interesting.
Um, in our area, Arkansas does, Alaska do, Alaska, that's not, I guess not, they're, they do qualify, but they're not exactly, they're not exactly in our area. Okay, there is Alabama, Alaska, Arizona, Arkansas, Colorado, Idaho, Iowa, Kansas, Maine, Minnesota, Mississippi, Missouri, Montana, Nebraska, Nevada, New Mexico, North Dakota, Oklahoma, Oregon, South Dakota, Texas.
Texas.
But Texas, you gotta think of West Texas.
Cause it's all big.
Utah, Vermont, West Virginia, West Virginia kinda surprised me, and Wyoming. So those are the.
Yeah, West Virginia surprised me.
You know, but that, that is what it is, so then you start, and then in here also, I was talking to Dawn Sullivan, is you've got to have, um, you have to do a uh cost analysis.
Analysis.
Well, the cost analysis, if you look at the, the packet, it, it's huge to fill out. So it costs about fifty thousand dollars, Dawn said, to do a cost analysis on a project. And so I asked her, I says, will you help the counties? If we decide we can come up with some corridors, will you help us pay for that? She said they would. So, so if we can, the state, each state can only submit three projects.
Okay.
Three projects, so, so if we can get together, I'm gonna, I mean, try to get with Donnie and Randy Robinson, and sit down and try to find out where, you know. Pat, I'm very interested, do you?
I think I've only got two.
Two bridges on your corridor?
Yeah.
See, I would, it's got to be two or more bridges.
One's supposed to be let next year. It was supposed to have been this year, but it got pushed to this.
You're pulling your bridges out, you're not, your bridges are being let outside your SURB? They're not included in your, your, your surface project?
Oh, yeah, they are, yeah.
So, does, so they're letting, I didn't, have you done your engineering yet on that project?
It's been halted.
Oh, yeah, I know, cause I know that.
But it was, it was in the process.
It was being, okay, it was, it's on the shelf, okay, I got you, okay.
Only one right now.
Only one, yeah, I got you. See, so I was trying to think of some corridor, not to be stingy, but I think Grant County has a good shot.
My only other project on that five year was the Jefferson Blacktop deal.
That's.
That's the only other District Three.
That's the one I'm talking about, I'm talking about your ten mile, your ten mile from Durham's Corner to Red Hill. That's, that's the corridor I'm talking about. Do you know how many projects, how many bridges are on that project? That's the one I'm talking about, because you could pull out, if that's a corridor, you could, we could pull the bridges if there was, I'd like to see at least three or four bridges. If you could pull the bridges out of that project.
There's technically a bridge period in that, I don't think there.
Well, you re, you built the bridge, that's definitely a bridge, right off of Red Hill Road, as you started around the corner.
Okay, yes, that bridge was the only one.
And, but it's done.
It's done.
That's the one we had.
The rest of it is, is, is getting the right of way and.
Yeah, okay, see, okay, that won't work, so that was, that was, my brainstorming was, I was thinking that project would be a corridor, and I thought.
Oh, you, I forgot about that.
That, that was, I was thinking of that corridor, but it's gotta be like a, a corridor that we're gonna have to put some kind of cost analysis, and like I told, and that's what I told him down O dot, when I talked to him, it says, agriculture is definitely a co, a cost benefit. I said, you talk about detours ten miles around, the cost analysis, or, or school bus routes, or mail bus routes, I says, we can get some cost analyses on that. Especially, uh, they have to be on, on M B I, so anyway, that's where we're at. I'm still working on that, but I'm gonna.
Well, I appreciate.
We've got a deadline, we've got a, the very short deadline, all the paperwork has to be turned into U S D O T by December fourth to get a cost analysis, that's gonna take probably thirty days, so we gotta identify. That's why I'm gonna get with Donnie, I'm gonna pull all those SURB projects and see what we've got.
Okay.
See where we are on that.
That would be.
If you guys come up with any ideas of something in your area that's a corridor, please reach out to me, let me know what you're thinking of.
Okay.
The reason we wanted to look at the SURB is because the money has to be spent by twenty twenty-six, so they said that they're probably gonna look at, um, I was talking about Chris Mitten in back in D C. He said they're probably gonna give high priority to those that maybe already have their uh engineering done.
Right.
You know, not necessarily N I P A, but how much right of way, you know, if you've got right of way procured, or, you know, not an issue if it's within the same footprint. And I think we can beat O dot on that, because any bridges unless, but they're gonna use something off their eight-year pran, plan too.
Yep, that's exactly what they're gonna do.
Anyway. That's where we're at on that.
Okay, I don't have anything else, uh, well, was it on me or?
Yeah, you were, yeah, I just, I'm sorry, just having a conversation on that.
That's okay, but I just appreciate you doing that. Uh, that's really all I have.
Okay. Do you have your N O D A meeting this week, Max?
No, my N O D A meeting is next week.
Okay, yeah.
And so is my statewide uh meetings a week after.
Um, yeah, all those next.
Next, yeah, next week should be Alba.
Alba will be on the night, not till the ninth.
I'm actually gonna meet with a gentleman this afternoon, Joe Sherman, with the, he's gonna help me, we're gonna take some more soil.
Oh, yeah, yeah, good, you got, he's coming, okay.
And he told me to tell you that they're gonna start Wednesday down by Lawton with that, that road project. Uh, he's supposed to be sending you and I the location, and so we could go down and look at that project.
Yeah, I'd like to do that Wednesday, yeah, okay.
I was just there this weekend down by Lawton.
Was you?
My son live, that cold, Cody and his wife live in between Chickasha and, they live in Fletcher, which is between Chickasha and Lawton.
Okay.
So it's gonna be south of Lawton, did you say?
Yeah, down by Lawton, I'm not sure. He's gonna send us the address.
Okay.
And, and they're gonna start it Wednesday, so they'll be working on it for a few days.
Okay, that, that's good, all right.
But uh, he wanted me to tell you.
Okay, that's.
He called me this morning and told me that, and I said, that's, that's great, and he's supposed to be up here at two o'clock to go with me to look at, at, take some more soil samples up here. And uh, I told him I'd sure like to get down there and see this other project, see how it's working out.
I've been working with Brandon on this A T and T First Net deal, trying to get that done. I'm supposed to go Tuesday uh down to E, back to En, and they can get it up and running, so I'm supposed to go back down there, talk to them.
Okay, you should be good to go. Um, I pulled up my local, my local control, and it shows that your account's active now, so you should be able to go in anytime to go in and do it.
Well, but they, the, we, when I went down there to activate it, I got it active, but then when I went down there, they couldn't get the pass codes to work, and then I finally got the email at two thirty the next morning.
Yep, and, well, in the emails, we don't have to use the email.
That's what you said, so I'm gonna talk to them.
As I think it was Friday, we no longer have to do that, cause they're gonna trust and verify.
Trust and verify.
But I'm still.
Yeah, I'm still gonna walk, I'm still gonna walk, I'm gonna still get that, I'm still gonna go down there and try to get, walk through that process, okay? And then I also have a Naco transportation call on Tuesday. And then Wednesday, at nine o'clock, is the Grant County Resolution Meeting here, and I've turned in two resolutions for us. I turned in one resolution for the return of the thirty million on the Health Department, that that'll, you know, come back automatically, and the other one was in support of returning uh, uh, half of the other two hundred million, so it'd be a hundred million, I don't know if they'll support it or not, but the thirty million should be a no brainer for anybody, since the Health Department's willing to give that back to us. So those are the two resolutions I've turned in. And then that afternoon, I have a Naco membership call, and uh Thursday, I have my Naco Central Region call. Coda Conference is this week, and you're going to that, that's in Tulsa, yeah, okay, so that's what I've got going on this week.
Okay.
Brings us down to item ten.
Hey, that is a good time to say I would make a motion to adjourn.
No second.
At twelve oh three, has moves, Ronk, seconds to adjourn, all in favor?
Bobbin?
Aye.
Ronk?
Aye.
All righty.
All right, motion uh passes unanimously, we are adjourned, so.